Thank you. I want to welcome you to the Select Board meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 6, 2022. The time is 7:00 PM. I want to ask those who are in the room to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. We have one, I think, brief matter to take up right out of the gate, scheduled at 7 o'clock. And then we have two presentations that we'll walk through. The first item pertains to an order of taking. And I believe it's Bayberry Lane Extension?
It's a culvert replacement and drainage infrastructure project. The order of taking is for easements, construction easements for the project. And there are three of them.
And I assume those directly impacted are well aware of this?
Everyone's been notified and there's a plan attached to the, in the packet.
Okay. Is this a new road?
No, it's existing.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions about this particular item?
Is it a new culvert? Or is it a replacement? Hello, Mr. Hardeman.
Mr. Chair, through you, Kevin Hardeman, Town Engineer. This is going to be a culvert replacement. Currently, there are four corrugated metal pipes, and we're going to replace it with a concrete box culvert, approximately 16 feet wide.
How long will the work take?
It's hard to say. We've been working on this for about four years now. But the physical work is probably going to take two to three months to complete.
Sounds good to me.
Anyone else?
I just have one quick thing. It mentions a permanent easement and a temporary easement. So is there, is the permanent easement where the culvert is? And then the temporary is just where they're working around?
Correct. The permanent easement is where the culvert and the riprap is going to occupy that space on private property. The temporary easement is ordered to get down the hill to access the construction location.
But that'll go away once the construction is completed.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I had.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions, I would ask for a motion to execute the order of taking. So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, let me, for the person doing our minutes, so that we have clarity on that. Mr. Kelly made the motion. Ms. Wellman seconded. And I'll ask all those in favor to please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll make that unanimous. All right. Thank you for the help, Mr. Hardeman. Okay. Let me invite members of the Tewksbury North and Trahan School Reuse Committee to come forward. Welcome. And if you wouldn't mind, just so we can capture all this for posterity's sake, if you would just individually introduce yourselves or introduce your colleagues. Mr. Schick, welcome.
And we can introduce ourselves. I'm Bruce Schick, 301 Seale Drive.
Hi, I'm Kayla B. Joni Smith at 14 Anthony Road.
And I'm Jeff Alwell at 6 Emily Road.
All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Mark Krappman is also a member of our committee.
Okay. All right. So you've provided us a presentation, a PowerPoint, and a written report. And I'm sure my colleagues have reviewed that. But do you want to give us a pass through and summary of that?
Yeah, we'll try to keep it brief since you've got both the presentation and the report. I want to start by saying that we're here presenting only. And at the conclusion of the presentation, we recommend that the committee be deemed to have completed its task and be disbanded.
Okay.
As of the end of this meeting?
At the end of this, at the end of our presentation, we'd be okay, too. I also wanted to thank people who were on the committee, who are not on the board up there, who put effort into this over the past three years. It was Ken Duffett, Bridget Garabedian, Lorna Gary, Jay Kelly, and Keith Sullivan. I wasn't there for the whole time. I think that may have covered it all. But anyway, I wanted to give credit where credit is due for the people who put their time into it. And I also want to thank the Select Board for your time and effort to move the town forward in the best way possible in the real world, given all the constraints that you have to operate under. And I want to thank Mr. Montori for paying attention to the details and for finding the best solution to financing the town's decisions, which we'll have a point later on. So, oh, you got it?
Yep.
All right. Being a guy who likes to be very bottom line oriented, for those of you who like to skip to the end, mostly people in TV land, our primary recommendations are to retain the properties, demolish the schools as soon as possible, and to build parks that are compatible with future considerations, which we'll talk more about later. In your infinite wisdom, you provided for a broad base committee representing different areas of the town and different interests. I think that that was a pretty good composition for the committee. So primary goals that were assigned to the committee were to review and document the current land area of the schools. The north is 17 acres, 16.8 is buildable, and the Trahan is 6.5 acres, which I believe is all buildable. We were supposed to review and document current conditions of the school buildings and determine if they can be reused or should be demolished. The short version of that is, they hired a set of engineers, went in, reviewed all the systems in the buildings, came to the conclusion that the systems were well past their overdue date, and the school should be demolished. We saw no reason to change that particular conclusion. The zoning for the schools, the north is our 40 and could accommodate 15 homes. The Trahan is in the South Village District and could accommodate 45 multifamily dwellings. We were supposed to meet with stakeholders in the area. So we met with various people who came to our meetings. We had an outreach meeting. We had a survey, which we'll talk about more, but we had 877 responses to the survey, which, as we all know, is about four or five times the number of people who show up at town meetings. So it's a pretty good cross-section of the town. We were asked to seek information from other communities who had reused their schools. But once we figured out that the schools were going to be demolished, it didn't appear to make a lot of sense to go out and find how to reuse them in that particular fashion. So we opted not to do that. And lastly, we're supposed to provide you a report, which you now have. The engineer's report will be, when Mr. Mackey tells me how to get it done, attached to our report as a link and on the town server. But there's, I don't know, 40, 50 pages of report there, which said that the systems are all, pretty much all junk, and that the schools need to be torn down. I know from going through the schools with John Marsh and the school department that there is asbestos behind the brick, which is going to mean that the cost of bringing these schools down is going to be very high. It's like an extra million dollars per school, I think, to get rid of the asbestos. So it's unfortunate. Let's say they were built in those days, but that's what we have to deal with. So with limited reusability, one of the things that we talked about a lot, and where I would like to present this, is that if money is a driving factor, there may be an avenue to reuse the buildings. And the Trahan was deemed to be the more likely candidate for this use, where we could acquire, potentially could acquire state historical preservation funds and have the schools reused as affordable housing. That would make more sense at the Trahan because, you know, the zoning and so forth, you have to change zoning for the north school. Anyway, that is an option. And we will tell you that that's not what the residents prefer, more housing. They don't prefer that. But it is a priority for the state and for the town to come up with affordable housing. So hence the comment about making the hard decisions. Moving on. Committee was formed back in 2019. Seems hard to believe, but three years ago. January 2020, they hired the engineers. It's a report dated January 5, 2021. We met with Mr. Montori, went over to the staff, and went over some detailed questions. June of 2022, October, we met with various people, school administration, and we did a, an outreach session to which I think some close to 500 people said they'd be interested being on the mailing list, and less than 20 showed up. But we had a good discussion. So I mentioned the survey earlier. I said that we had 877 responses. But we put a lot of effort into providing enough upfront valuable information before people answered the survey. So it wasn't just throwing mud against the wall to see what you'd like to do. You know, we tried to keep it as realistic as possible. And now we're delivering our recommendation. Let's see. Anything interesting on the approach slide here? I told you we heard from the Butters. We heard from a couple of affordable housing advocates. Might mention that the survey was extensively promoted thanks to Mr. Montori's staff. Got it out every way possible, plus some social media types. I think it was 65% of the people said they heard about it on social media for future reference. And lastly, we want to deliver, you know, our recommendation in terms of what's in the best interest of the entire community, although the Butters are an important part of the community and the people have to live with whatever gets decided. But any of these decisions are a decision for the entire community. The survey results, again, will be linked. It's probably easier to look at the next slide and see what people didn't want. But the bottom line is people wanted to retain the properties and create parks. This question was, tell us the top three things that you don't want to happen on the sites. And the answers were basically the same for both sites. So we're just showing here the North Street property. And the size of the word tells you how much, how many people didn't want it. If you're not familiar with the way these things work. But if you look through it, you know, it's pretty much, they don't want housing. They don't want business. They don't want condos. They want parks. That's the bottom line. And then considerations, I alluded to it before. Affordable housing is a priority for the town, a priority for the state. People don't necessarily want it at these locations. Let me be clear, they don't want it at those locations. But that's why you guys get paid the big bucks to make the heavy decisions. And if money becomes the issue, as I said before, and historical preservation funds are way out of spending $2.2 million to tear down a school, and somebody's willing to give you the money to turn it into something useful, it may be a pathway out of spending money, which people don't like to spend. The estimate, which Mr. Montori got through the contractor who's building the current school, and then I guess their demolition expert, was roughly $5 million to take down the two schools. And although we weren't really chartered to talk about funding, as you may recall from reading our report in great detail, three pages of the six were related to funding issues that we talked about. Because I think we talked about funding more than anything else. Because in the end, you can make all wish lists you want, but if you don't have a way to pay for it, they're not going to happen. So one of the things that we, as a committee, and residents who came to our meetings on multiple occasions, wanted to part is the urgency with which we should make the decision. Couple of reasons. You don't want vacant buildings sitting around to become problems. We learned that the kids are already climbing on the roof of the Trahan School and lighting fires in the area. But climbing on the roof should be reason for concern in a building that's already occupied. When it becomes unoccupied, it's going to be a security concern, vandalism, et cetera. And the other thing is having a facility's background. If you don't make a decision about what you want to do, and you think you might want to reuse the buildings, the town is going to have to pay to keep them at some minimal level of heat and cooling, which is going to cost, you know, X dollars. We don't know what X is, but it's not going to be nothing. And the systems that you need to keep running for that purpose will have to be maintained. You don't want them sitting there for years with no decision. So push, 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 make a decision. So our actual recommendation. At the North Street, we had a discussion with the school administration folks. And that location is one that, if we were to want to build another, what they call a lower grades, lower grades elementary school, that is the better location for it. It already has been a school. It's got the HVAC on student, excuse me, the power infrastructure is already there. So it would be a great site for another school if we wanted to do it. So that is our recommendation, that you leave that property as a potential location for a school. Very many people wanted to connect the school property and the parking lot in particular to Frasca Fields. We could use CPA funds from open space to do that. So that's a freebie, more or less, already paid for as far as funding. They also like to see some inclusive play structures. There's already a CPA-funded structure there. Outdoor function space of some type, native plantings and a nursery, four native plantings, pickleball courts and community gardens. Those are the things that came up. We tried to use some threshold for things that people wanted. And we basically said if 40% of more of the people wanted it, that's what we put on our list of things. There are more things on the list than these. At the Trahan, very clearly, the drive is to create a neighborhood park for South Tewksbury. In our mind, this would be a permanent park. So we're looking at inclusive play structures, possibly a dog park, pickleball courts again, splash slash spray pad, native plantings. And I think we also talked about a basketball court, didn't we?
Yeah, the courts were all pretty high.
I don't know if that one did get on there, but anyway. That was one of the things they wanted. I believe there may be one there anyway. So that is it, my friends. You've got our recommendation. You've got our report. And now we're here to answer our in-depth questions.
All right. First of all, thank you. And thank the members of the committee, past and present, for undertaking the task that was asked of the community. In many cases, we need to have resident participation, resident input. And this is a vehicle to accomplish that. So I appreciate your efforts as a committee. I am glad that you recognized those past members in your opening comments because I have no doubt that any and all made some contribution along the way. So good stuff. Let me open it up to my colleagues for any possible questions that they may have.
I guess just a comment. I guess I'll start off. So to Mr. Johnson's point, you know, it was on the committee, awesome job. You know, what can I say? Awesome job. I think it was at the 40-yard line, you guys moved another 60 yards in the end zone. So great work from end to end completion. Wholeheartedly support your recommendations. I love it. I also liked the fact that you were thinking about cost. At the end of the day, cost is a significant, you know, factor, game changer, if you would. And you guys took everything into consideration. And at the end of the day, there's going to be a cost to remove the facilities. But it is what it is. You know, it wasn't embedded in the school budget. That's neither here nor there. We have to face the challenges as a town. And you guys recognize that fact as a committee. So just simply put, great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Crapman?
Yeah, I mean, thank you very much for everybody's hard work. I know how many meetings we had, week after week after week. You know, I'm sure everybody's looking forward to taking a break from these meetings. I can see it on your faces. But, no, it was great participation from the residents. It really came down to, you know, we were looking tasked with trying to figure out what to do with both locations. And then we reached out to the schools, and the schools, you know, gave us information that they plan on applying for building another school. So that kind of took that right out of the thing. That saved us a lot of effort to try to figure out what to do with that property when it's already seemed like it's deemed, already set to build another school that's needed in the community. Then we'll be looking to do what to do with the other two schools after that happens. But it's really going to come down to, you know, when we did this survey, we asked what everybody wanted. And it's great. Everybody wanted it. But it's also going to come down to, you know, we're looking at if, you know, if we were to tear down both schools and build parks, we're talking in the range of maybe $6, $6.5 million when all said and done. Because it's probably going to cost five to take them down. And then whatever you're going to build, you know, if you're going to put sprinkler parks, basketball, everything has a cost associated with it. That wasn't part of the survey to see what the residents wanted to pay for. We just asked what they wanted. So it's really going to come down to funding, what's available, what we can use it for. And, you know, North Street was easy. The Trahan was a little bit more difficult to try to figure out, you know, use for it. It's great if it actually comes down, if the residents want something that's going to be user-friendly. But that's what we're going to have, the difficult decisions to try to figure out in the future of what we're going to do. And they took everybody's thoughts and considerations in it. And I want to thank everybody in the committee very much for all your hard work.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much to the committee, to all the members past and present, and to my colleagues on the board who have been involved in this since before COVID and had some of that work stall during COVID. And it's a big lift, the work that you all did and the consideration that you gave to the community. So I, like my colleague, appreciate you getting it over the goal line and that tremendous amount of work. I took the survey. I thought it was really complete. I went to, I think, one or maybe two of the meetings over the course of that, of the whole time. And you were very welcoming to members of our community who came and participated. I thank you for your work. We will make a motion to disband the committee for you.
Oh, you will?
Yes, we will.
Oh, good.
No, we won't hold you in abeyance. But your work is considerable and very important to the future of our town. What I hear from your report and from reading it is that our residents are wishing to continue to preserve open space in this community or create it in this case. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, in my mind, it's not so much open space, the way I think of open space, which is, you know, like trees and trails and nothing else.
Yes.
What we heard was they want parks, right? So difference in my mind is a park has things going on. People are going to have to maintain it. There will be, you know, expense to create it, which there isn't for open space, in my mind. And there's going to be an expense to maintain it. Which, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for the town to come up with a creative way to use these spaces. You've got funds in the CPA reserves that you can use to do nice things, in my opinion. You figure out how to use it, which is why we have Mr. Montori.
Well, then we can also use NIMCO.
You can get out the money to do nice things once you get the schools down. So if the decision is take them down, that's the tough one. How do you get the money to get them down? But I would make the decision.
I appreciated your, I appreciated your warning on the urgency. And I share that since I know how much it costs to insure empty buildings through my work. So no, you're absolutely right that that is a cost. And it's one, and then there's a risk as well. Kids have been climbing the roof of the Trahan for 20 years, at least. Right? Did you climb the roof of the Trahan?
No, no. I just know people.
I absolutely would have been one of those kids climbing the roof. I can guarantee.
I've seen you on the trail, and I'm not surprised. Yeah. No, I appreciate that. We will be hearing from NIMCO soon on our housing production plan. And so I'm hopeful that we will be able to combine the work that your committee has done as an informed, part of the informed decision-making as we go forward with how and where do we want to plan affordable housing and subsidized housing, that we want to be involved with the development, if we want to be involved in that development? How we work with developers on that? How we work to create those park spaces that can be programmed for our residents as we go forward? So again, your work is very valuable, and I greatly appreciate it. So thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Weren't you on this committee at one point, too?
What, me?
Yes.
I'm not on this committee.
No, were you on this committee once? Oh, okay. Well, you've been on all the other ones. All the other ones. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mackey, you have a comment or question?
Yes, a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo the sentiment of gratitude that you guys got this. Not only did all this thorough work, but did it under the time constraint of getting it done by the end of the year, as we asked. Also want to call out the use of all the tools you had at your disposal, the social media, the emailing, all that stuff that helped you get that survey out. Lots of feedback, most of which was positive on the survey. Some people did think it was a little too dense. But given the fact that you guys were kind of given a blank slate, you had to start somewhere. So lots of positive feedback. And I do want to call out the great work you did. I actually have an earmark to go back and reread the financial section of the report because we knew that was going to be a consideration. We knew taking down these buildings would be very expensive. And want to give that a second read. So thank you all for the time and effort.
All right. Thank you. You've met the mission that we asked you to undertake. So in that regard, I thank you for that effort. I'm going to ask my colleagues to vote to accept the report. And then we will take that under advisement. And I know the town manager and his budget efforts and consideration of all the other factors will bring some more information back to us to consider as we move forward. So let's take that first step to formally accept the report that's been presented. If someone could make a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the report of the North and Trahan School Reuse Committee.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will make that unanimous as well. And then at their request, and certainly having completed the mission that was asked, at this time, let me ask if there's a motion to formally disband from the town's records the Tewksbury North and Trahan School Reuse Committee.
So moved. Second.
Here we have a motion made by all on the board. Mr. Crapman made the motion. Mr. Mackey seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The committee is now disbanded, and I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thanks, please.
Okay. Let me invite our DPW director to come forward. We're going to talk about snow and ice, and I believe some water improvement updates as we get a little deeper into the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's great. Excuse.
Is that a fit?
I do.
New computer.
Yeah, they don't have those.
Do you need the adapter?
You make that.
I don't know if that works out though.
Sir?
Do I hook that to mine and that run it?
Yeah.
Let me find it first. Hold on.
I'm going to, I know it's a long night for you folks. So what I'm going to do is the presentation will come up, but I can start with what I have here and we can move along. Brian Gilbert, Director of Public Works. With me tonight is Dave Lozard, Assistant Director, and Kevin Hardeman, Town Engineer.
Welcome, gentlemen.
As we dive into winter, um, winter storms test the patience of everyone, residents, pedestrians, commuters, all alike. The intent of tonight's, um, presentation is to provide you and the community, um, with some information about how we prepared for this year, uh, operational practices and expectations before the inevitable. And here we go. Just as a way of introduction, the purpose of the snow and ice program is to, uh, clear roads and maintain emergency services and to provide routine travel. We maintain approximately 320 lane miles of road, uh, 20 acres of parking lot and 23 miles of sidewalk. We have three weather forecast services, so we watch the weather carefully, two of which, uh, we don't pay for, one of which we do. They all have levels of granularity for regional, um, forecast to write down into Tuxbury in an hour by hour, um, conditions. The service that we do have, we do have a 24/7 meteorologist, so we can call him up, find out what's happening as the storm progresses. Storms can vary widely, uh, both from storm to storm and within the storm itself. And there are some of the variables that we have to deal with. There are two, uh, bylaws or policies that relate to snow and ice. The first is the overnight parking ban. The first bullet, um, identifies from November 1st to March 31st, there is a ban in effect between 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m. The second bullet basically is during any snowing event or icy, where icy conditions exist, there's no parking on the street, um, at that time, during the day, um, night, during the hours of the parking ban, no parking on the street. And the third bullet there basically gives authority to the Director of Public Works to, um, tow, um, cars that may impact snow and ice, uh, treatments and, and operations. In the 15 years that I've been here, um, there's only been one car that's been towed. We do everything to try to find the owner, work with the police in order to do that, knock on doors, and we've been very fortunate there. The second policy is the placing of an obstruction, um, is prohibited. It's unlawful to place an obstruction in the town's traveled way, which will hinder removal of snow. Some of the examples there would be pumping water or plowing driveway snow into the street, depositing snow nearer on hydrants, and locating basketball hoops and other recreational, materials, I guess, or equipment, uh, adjacent to the right of way. One note on that, uh, we've started to use more wing, wing blades on our trucks, so it expands the width of the truck to the driver's side, um, which when the wing is up, can stick out and catch, um, basketball hoops. So I asked the community if you do have a hoop on the street, if you could place that back a good three, four, five feet from the roadway so we don't catch it. There are three major stages to a winter, uh, ice and snow operation, anti-icing, plowing, and de-icing. I'll go through those. And then there's two major post-storm operations, which is sidewalk plowing and snow lifting and removal. The anti-icing is conducted prior to the accumulation of snow to prevent the snow from bonding and compacting on the pavement surface. There are two application methods. There's the crystal salt application, which would begin with the onset of snow. And then there's the salt brine liquid, which we can apply days before. We have two, uh, liquid brine trucks. We've been doing this the last few years, about three years. And you can see the, what, the lines on the street where we've actually applied it. It really works and it does help to, um, create an interface between the street and the snow. So when we do plow, it really pulls the stuff, the snow up off this, off the street, off the pavement. Anti-icing also helps to reduce accumulation of snow at the beginning of the event. Plowing operation begins about two to three inches. When two to three inches have accumulated, this physically removes the snow from the street. And the main objective here is to keep roads passable during the snowstorm. But toward the end, we have plows go back and push back windrows and corners to provide a maximum clearance. This is probably the area where we frustrate, um, residents of town. We plow in their driveways. It's just a fact of life. We're not, we can't pick up our plows as we're going by, as we're pushing back. And the idea of pushing back is to get, uh, one, as much width of the traveled way as we can, but we know there's going to be subsequent storms and we need a place for those, um, that snow storage as well. So we're pushing back, uh, toward the end of the, uh, the end of the storm. De-icing starts when all, uh, when we've, basically the snow has stopped and we've, we're not plowing at that point. We, um, um, we basically treat major and minor arterials and hills with salt. The idea of this is to melt any kind of snowpack on the road. It also lowers the freezing point of water, so we don't have refreezing after, um, after we've plowed. Traffic, wind, sun also help dry off the roads, um, depending upon the time of day. Post-storm operations, um, sidewalk, um, plowing. We have here 23 miles of sidewalk to clear. We have three pieces of equipment, two of which have snow blowers that, you know, if we do get a sizable storm, will work well. The third piece of equipment only has a plow. And so that becomes, um, inoperable, if you will, at that point. In 2019, I made a presentation to the board on, um, sidewalk plowing. At that time, we determined, uh, 19 miles of sidewalk, little over 19 miles of sidewalk that we would handle. These, um, uh, were prioritized by, uh, major criterials where locations were associated with schools, commercial zones, and providing access to those commercial zones. We also had operational criteria measures that we also put in that, uh, presentation and that we've, that we've worked with. Uh, and that would be, uh, three inches or more, plus three inches of, uh, snow. We would start the operations, um, at least 24 hours after we stopped plowing. And that would allow the guys to go home and get some rest before they start, um, the second part of their operation. And that we would finish within 56 hours, anywhere from 30, 32 to 56 hours. And that would depend on, um, a number of things, um, such as the amount of snow, um, the timing that, that we would be able to go back out, uh, equipment availability. And if we had other things that were as important, such as lifting and removal of snow, we would have to work those priorities out. Beginning this year, uh, we do have a challenge in front of us in terms of snow removal operations post-storm. And that's the Ryan School Campus and the new elementary school. We've met with the, uh, school department on this. We've, uh, looked at areas where we can permanently store snow, where we can temporarily store snow. And we're going to be in, uh, lifting and, and, um, removal operations there. And we still have to work this out because we do realize that the school is occupied with, with classes and its operation after school. There's always events on the weekends. There's always events. And so we have to, um, we have to take those into consideration, work very closely with them, uh, on this. But that will be something that's going to be, uh, new and different for us. We do plan to have aft, uh, post-operation reviews with the school department so that we can learn how to do this more efficiently. But that's going to be a major, um, uh, challenge for us this year. Lifting and, and removal of snow also entails, and historically here in town, uh, going back and clearing intersections for sightlines and things of that sort. Operating procedures. The town is divided into five sections. Each section has a root supervisor. The snow and ice coordinator manages the five root supervisors and watches over the entire field operation. And everyone works with the Assistant Director, um, to, uh, who oversees the operation, prepares, does all the preparations, if you will, with his team, collects data and does the report writing. Equipment, we have 25 in-house staff. And currently there are two staff in the Park Department that work with us. I want to make a shout out, uh, to the school department, who over the last few years, more, in more recent time, has become more involved in, uh, snow operations at the school. And it's been a real help to have them onboard. Going back years, they didn't do any plowing, it was all DPW. But they've really, um, they've really helped out. So to John and his staff. The equipment ranges from, uh, small pickup trucks to large loaders. And some of the adjustments that we've made this year, and Dave's going to get into it a little bit more, but, uh, we've conducted a complete and thorough, uh, root assignment, uh, assessment, and we've modified many of our routes in that process. And Dave's done that with his staff, um, uh, the supervisors and the snow and ice coordinator. They've looked at the liquid application routes, they've looked at the salting routes, and they've looked at the plowing routes. And they've come up with a number of changes. One of them is utilizing Bobcats in the, in the parking lots. Traditionally, the park staff with their trucks would be plowing, uh, the lots. But this year, um, we're going to put Bobcats in there, um, which will do a great job. They can turn on a dime, they can really clean and tuck and pick up and put it right where it's needed. But the secondary benefit of that was attracting contractors because the contractor wants to put all his equipment on. And if we're just saying, no, you leave your Bobcats home, I'll take your trucks, he's going to go elsewhere. So, um, by doing this, um, I think it's going to be an efficient way to execute or prosecute our, um, uh, event. And, uh, but also we've gotten the benefit of, uh, attracting people in. We've adjusted our contractor rates and Dave's going to go through that. And we've modified our hourly rate for DPW retirees. We have three retirees that want to come back and plow for us, so we're going to take advantage of that. And so, um, that's been a benefit as well. Dave's going to take over.
Good evening. As Brian mentioned, there's five major sections in town. Through those five sections, we have what we call 13 salting routes, uh, split up among town. When we reviewed the town, we kind of realized that there were some streets, um, depending on where you are in town, that the larger dump trucks would not be able to access as easy. So we decided to start splitting up our smaller, uh, 550s into those routes. It may not appear, as you can see in this one example, that it might look efficient, but this is more of a larger truck route. It's more efficient than trying to go down dead ends, smaller cul-de-sacs for a larger truck. So instead, we've broken it up by the vehicle itself within that section in order to have them better treat it, rather than just say, all these streets are next to each other, go up and down them. We've also been under something of a mandate from the DEP as far as chlorine reduction. Between, uh, 20, 2021 and 2022, which is last winter, we've actually seen a 64% reduction in use during storm events by adhering to calibration requirements that they've set. Last year, we haven't seen a decline in road safety following this calibration settings. So we're definitely more than happy to continue that, monitor it and comply. But as I'll get into on the next slide, there's also a significant financial reason for doing that. During the pandemic, um, 1920 winter and 2021 winter, um, costs were rather stagnant. People weren't, uh, I guess, purchasing as much. So diesel fuel was low, home construction, billing construction was slowing down. So they actually held their salt price, which was good for the town. As soon as the economy opened back up, um, we've seen in the last two years a nearly 55% increase in salt. So the fact that we've had a 64% reduction in use has theoretically offset the cost. So hopefully our salt budget will remain steady from the 2021. Obviously variable based on number of storm events, number of salting events, but, um, ideally, we're going to be able to maintain our budget levels of salt use from three years ago, which is a huge cost savings. When you're throwing it down at 20, $72 a ton, it, uh, it can add up pretty fast in a storm.
Can you speak, um, just follow that with supply chain? Do you have difficulty or anticipate difficulty getting any supply?
No. So luckily the, the town has made the wise investment, a, a large salt shed. So what we typically do is after a storm event, we have the salt slips, so we know exactly plus or minus how much salt was used. We reach out directly to the supplier, put the order in. Typically, it's about a week turnaround and we will restock that storm event and then following week. Some communities with smaller sheds, you know, only 600 ton, um, you get one bad storm and they're to the back of the wall. Luckily, we've been insulated in Tuxbury that we could handle three, potentially four very large storms, especially now with the chlorine reduction plan. So there is that extra leeway if we weren't able to get our loads every week, that we would be protected and still have material to use.
Thank you.
Our next aspect we looked at was plowing routes. So in this example, this is everything on the south side of Shawshin. This is in the, what we call the center section. And we've labeled this as Center 1, C1. Throughout the entire town, there's 48 separate plow routes. We tried to match them up geographically as far as proximity to each other, but also the amount of lane miles and what we call like a degree of difficulty. As we talked earlier about salting, if you have a large truck, he's not going to be able to get down dead ends as easy. Anyone that lives in town knows the south is notorious for a significantly large amount of small, narrow streets, a lot of dead ends, and it makes it rather difficult. And that's where we actually utilize, um, some of the Bobcats that have pusher boxes and plows because it's a lot easier on your neck to drive down the street, push the snow, turn around and then work your way back out. I know I've helped out in the south and by the end of the storm, after, you know, 16 hours of constantly turning around to back up, you start to get a little neck cramp. So, um, I was all in favor of getting more Bobcats for the south for that reason. One thing we do exclude from these contractor routes is major road networks. I want to maintain, uh, operation efficiency by ensuring our personnel are on all our major roads, our Shawshin, our Whipple's, our north, our Andover River, you know? I want to make sure those are constantly being hit at regular intervals because I know my guys are going to follow a structure. We have certain routes that they follow in just constant circles all night. Does get a little boring, but we're, we're down to black as best we can all storm, whereas the neighborhoods, they're going to be Whereas the neighborhoods, they're gonna be ducking in and out, as you can see, in and out, in and out, in and out. It becomes a lot less efficient and I don't want that on the mains. I wanna make sure that our big trucks are hitting all those mains and keeping them as close to black as we can. The other major aspect of these new root assignments and breaking them into smaller components is I know exactly what contractor is going to be on C one. So if he doesn't check in at the beginning of the storm, I can immediately assign either my personnel or another contractor to help pick up the slack. And if that new person doesn't know what he's doing, we can easily give him a paper map and say, here are your streets. There's no questions. Is that mine? Is that yours? Cause verbal communication, while it can be effective, isn't as clear as black and white image, especially sixteen hours into a storm and, you know. Was that my street? I don't remember. So there it is in black and white. And starting last year, we found that a lot more effective and we did have fewer calls of people saying their street wasn't missed, so. We still have a problem with smaller dead ends. A lot of contractors in town don't understand if that's a street or a driveway. But now that we have these maps, it's a lot easier for them to say, oh yeah, that that is a driveway or that is a house, so. It's helped out a lot. And that gets us into the financial aspect. I believe there's been a printout. It's a lot easier to follow on the app that is on the screen. We did an aggressive campaign this year. We we actually, what we did, an RFP, request for proposals. We've had some major complaints about contractors not being able to to make money because there is no guarantee. You sign up, you put your plow, you put your insurance on. And in the last two years, we've only averaged six storm events. But those hours each year have varied greatly. We'll talk about the hours later, but there's been a few people that with insurance costs have basically said, I'm barely breaking even if that because I gotta pay a guy, I gotta pay my truck maintenance, my my fuel and my insurance. And at the end of the year, they basically said, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not coming back next year. So when we did a request for a proposal, we basically said, tell us what you need. So we gave them some route maps in the north and in the east and we said, how much would it cost for you to do these routes? What pieces of equipment would you provide and how many? And we compared that to our internal numbers. We got a response, it matched up fairly well with the amount of equipment. And we use that as the basis for establishing the rates. So what you'll see on the screen is base rates, which are basically what you'll see on a printed piece of paper broadcast all over the internet. And then what we call the max incentive rate, where if you actually go through the contracts and see, what's my top dollar amount I can earn? So as you can see on our base rates, it does seem like we're well off the mark. But once you start factoring in the actual incentives, we actually come very close to our competitors. So for example, uh mass DOT is a a pretty significant benchmark. Every community wants to look at it, see how far off you are. For the most part, DOT can really set the pace of communities because they're in every community. You don't wanna be so far off the DOT when, you know, you live right next door, so. So we looked at them, we compared favorably mainly because we typically use equipment they don't use, uh mainly smaller equipment. For the most part, I can't imagine the DOT would want a a three-fifty on on the highway. So they tend to price it a lot lower than uh than competitive as far as communities go. However, they also want the larger equipment. So we tend to chase them on the larger six-wheel dumps and the tri axles because that is typically what they're gonna run on their roads. So when we did incentives, uh one of the major complaints we had talked about was fuel. So we looked at the U.S. Energy Information Administration and we've actually utilized the DOT model for price adjustments. Now, the DOT set their rate sooner than the town of Tewksbury. So their base was three dollars and twenty-six cents. The Tewksbury base price is four dollars and eighty-four cents. What that means is when the price exceeds that, there'll be a price adjustment in their hourly rate based on that difference. Now, at today's current price, which was released every Monday, that would account for us adding only thirty-six cents a gallon times a five-and-a-half gallon factor for a large truck or roughly two dollars an hour to our rate. It's a small amount of money when it, when you hear about it, but when you have roughly forty-eight pieces times sixteen hours, it does add up for these guys, so. Those little incentives do help. So this same day, based on that adjustment, the adjustment for the mass DOT today would be a dollar ninety-three. At five-and-a-half gallons would be roughly a ten dollar and sixty-two cent an hour adjustment, so. I don't blame them, they do early signup, so when gas was cheaper, that was the rate. We waited a little bit. Obviously, the summer, you saw diesel go up through the roof. So our base rate is a lot higher and it's actually declining back down to our rate, which is good. Now Andover is interesting. They didn't use the EIA model, they used a gas station in Lawrence to set their pricing metrics, so. Hopefully, no one knows the owner of that gas station or it could uh go the wrong way, but. Where it stands now, diesel's over five dollars a gallon at the station. So they've established a nine dollar an hour adjustment for their rates. Now, what's interesting is um if it can drop below five, then the incentive will drop all the way to five dollars an hour. And if by a good chance it drops to four dollars, then there is no incentive. The contractor pays for all his own fuel, there is no adjustment. I do think we have a a fair model. It's independent, it's not controlled by anyone that could alter its factor. And I think our base rate at four-eighty-three is pretty comparable to a lot of stations you can see around town, so. But our contractors did definitely appreciate that because two months ago, it looked like it was heading for seven dollars a gallon and we weren't gonna get anyone, so. One of our other incentives we did this year was what we call loyalty bonus. The reason we did this is the number of long-term companies, which is defined as who have plowed for the town for three or more years, has actually declined by twelve separate companies in the last two years.
Oh no.
We have a major retention problem, not due to any of what we've been doing. Our rates have been competitive, it's just the market conditions have basically said, it's not worth it between the damage, the labor cost and the fuel and insurance, we just can't do it. So what we did is established a loyalty program. For those that started last year and come back, they can get five dollars extra an hour. For those that have met the three-year criteria, would get ten. And for those that have been with us for five or more years, we get a fifteen dollar an hour bump. And on your max incentive rates, that's all reflective with today's gas prices. So as you can see, we're not in left field even with the maximum incentive of fifteen dollars an hour. When you look at LOL, they actually have no incentives in their contract. Their rate is their rate, it is what it is, the fuel is the fuel, you pay everything on your own. What is interesting though is they only have a three-hour minimum in their contract. Andover, Tewksbury and the DOT and most other communities have a four-hour minimum. So depending on the operation, they potentially could lose out on one whole hour versus coming to Tewksbury. So that was an interesting note. Andover rates look higher than Tewksbury, but when you drill down into it, we factored the three-hundred-dollar sign-on bonus and the ten percent attendance bonus. However, if you miss a storm, it comes off the table. So while the rates look higher than us, you miss one event, you're dropping that rate by ten percent and then roughly five dollars an hour for the sign-on bonus, which takes them right down to our level, so. We did extensive research and we we felt like we had the most competitive, equal, fiscally responsible rates that we could provide to get the best response, so. That's how we came up with these numbers, which may seem shocking when you look at the per.
Thank you.
So what we established is the amount of pieces, roughly forty-eight this year. If everyone signs up and we decided, well, if we took these forty-eight pieces and we paid the other towns' rates, where would we stand? Because we utilize more small equipment, we do pay more on the pickups. So technically, we would pay five percent more than mass DOT. Andover uses very similar-sized equipment. With their maximum perks, would actually cost us a little over five percent more. And LOL with their no incentive, this is the rate, would roughly be fourteen percent more. So we're certainly within striking distance overall on a per-storm event on what we would be paying. I don't feel like we're uncompetitive. And as I said, if those Andover incentives go away, then Andover is essentially right at our level, so. I do think we did a good job this year. So as we talked about contractor usage, twenty-twenty-one, roughly two winters ago, the contractors came in for approximately seventy-four and a half hours. Our response internally, which a lot of people don't realize, is nearly twice the amount of hours for that same storm. So we were coming in for roughly a hundred and forty-three of those hours. And then as we said last year, storms, they only came in for thirty-nine hours. So a lot of people didn't come back this year because they lost money. They put all the insurance on and had the guys on retainers and everything and they just didn't get the hours. And once again, we were in for roughly twice as much hours. Along those lines, um whenever we can do work in-house safely, even if we shave one hour, it could save the town six thousand dollars. So if every storm, we shave at least one hour off, six storms, it's thirty-six thousand dollars roughly saved for the taxpayers, so. We try to do as much as we can prior to calling contractors in. But obviously balancing out, um they're needing to respond so we don't lose them and obviously the need for public safety. But as Brian mentioned, there's a lot of post-storm within that first twenty-four hours and there's a lot of pre-treatment that goes into these events. So um, one example is last year, our guys had thirty-four-and-a-half-hour response over a forty-two-hour period. That included a twenty-six-and-a-half-hour storm event before going home to rest for seven-and-a-half hours before coming back for an eight-hour sidewalk shift to start to try our best to try and get as many schools and everyone to their work, so. There's a lot that's involved in storms. I know people do get frustrated if we can't get to the sidewalks fast enough. As Brian mentioned, we only have three machines. If it's a heavy storm and there's only two sidewalk machines for twenty-three miles and you're running into four, five, six-foot snowbanks at everyone's driveway, it does slow the process down. So the least amount of snow people put on the sidewalks or next to their driveways, it'll speed us up quite a bit, but um. Yeah, the guys do quite a lot of work and I do appreciate that for not only them showing up, but then coming back the next day on middle sleep and putting in a full eight, even when a lot of these are on weekends when, you know, they much rather be home or taking care of their own snow at their own house, I know. That's always fun for me when I get home at like two in the morning, I gotta shovel up, but. It's part of the job, but you know, we do it because it gets, it needs to get done, so.
Do you have any idea of the contractors that you're using maybe this year or in the last couple of years? How many are Tewksbury-based contractors versus other areas?
So we found the majority of people that are five-year plusers are Tewksbury residents.
Good.
They they take pride in in doing a good job, working those long hours. We actually had someone last year whose son went to school. He's like, you know, you know, I'll plow, you know, I want my kid to go to school. And you know, he was a tremendous help and the school is helping them out, so. Local residents and local contractors, whether they own a company or they're just an individual, do take a lot of pride.
Yeah.
We do appreciate that.
Yeah, so you were talking about the loyalty on the tenure of service, so that's another twist on that is, you know.
Goes back to the community essentially.
The local people, it's less fuel usage and they're more um easily accessible people because they're nearby, you know, that type of thing, so.
They appreciate the fact that, you know. They do apart for their, you know, neighbors essentially by plowing the streets so they can get to work in the morning, so.
And the other question I have for you is um, do any of the contractors have the capability of doing sidewalks?
Um, so one of the fundamental challenges of sidewalks is the width. If they were significantly wider, we could use our own in-house bobcats and other equipment. When you run into telephone poles, signposts, fire hydrants, mailboxes, not only does it slow it down because the last thing you wanna do is slide the machine and damage the machine and private property, but it also limits the size of the machine you can use.
Right.
If we were in a larger community with larger sidewalk systems, yes, we would be utilizing bobcats quite frequently, but we just don't have that uh capability.
Got it.
Yeah, the sidewalk contractors are rather narrow, they're four feet wi- width, whereas your bobcats go out to.
At least five and a half.
A little wider. And the contractors don't have the sidewalk um.
Typically, the the cost, you'll never recoup the cost. The reason we recoup the cost, as you can see, is we have to do the sidewalks, so we're always getting those hours every year. Whereas a contractor is dependent on us calling them. So to invest more than six figures into a piece of equipment, you may only get thirty-nine billable hours a year. It's just not conducive for their operations.
Okay. Thank you, that's really helpful.
And we'll finish up with how residents can help. Put a number of these in um. Some of this work will put on website as well. This will be one. Observe the winter parking bans, remove all roadside obstacles, uh keep trash recycling containers off the street on uh pickup day. Keep them interior to your driveway so we can um continue the plowing operation, we don't have to go out and around. Uh, reduce the speed. Speed is the biggest cause of accidents during a snowstorm, so reduce speed and drive cautiously. Clear snow away from hydrants. Shovel um, uh open uh in open catch basins so as snow melts, um it'll have a place to go. Don't blow or plow snow uh onto the street. At that point, we're fighting each other, if you will. Understand when the snow stops, the plowing operation has not and we have to push back. Uh, and we will fill in driveways unfortunately. There should be a mixture of sand and salt available at the DPW. This is for residents, not contractors. And uh, we ask everyone for everyone's patience.
Just before we go to the board, just Brian, can you just talk about two things? Um, the coordination with the schools this year and determining the sidewalks that were gonna be cleaned. I believe you met with them, went over the routes and they signed off on the sidewalks that will be plowed.
Yeah, so so on that, um, back in two thousand and nine, yeah, two thousand and nineteen, when I made the presentation, uh we did send the list of um sidewalks to be cleared to the school department to have them look at that, add anything that they wanted. Dave Libby um indicated to me that every every student is assigned a bus. This would certainly open up sidewalks for walkers and pedestrians and things of that. So my concern was um children walking the school. So we, the locations that we did um select were associated with the schools first, um which they kinda signed off on. Then commercial and, because we do have people who call and say, you know, I have uh accessibility issue and need um, need some help. So we've added those locations in as well.
Yeah, we're not, we're not salting sidewalks, we're plowing.
We're not salting sidewalks, we do not treat.
Big issue for people, we're not salting sidewalks.
Right.
And then lastly, can you just go, um, don't have patience and we'll call you during the storm to come and plow their streets? How are we handling phone calls and things like that before, during and after the storm?
During during the storm, uh we have a dispatcher um who um, all all the phones are directed towards uh his phone. He'll pick it up and and dispatch as necessary. After the storm, um and during off-hours, it would go to the um, the DPW. There's probably a number of different extensions that you can choose, but if you choose highway, they'll get it first thing in the morning and Dave will assign and um uh people to those uh issues. If it goes to administration, then when uh clerical staff come in, we collect those, give them to snow operations and then they'll go out and do those. Or if they call during the day, it'll most likely go to administration and we'll just dispatch from dispatch from there.
Great. Sounds like you're well-prepared. You've done a lot of research this year, more than in the past by comparison?
Yes, I would say so, absolutely.
Good, excellent.
They did, they did a great job, all of them.
So it's not a perfect process, and there's a lot of variability, which we appreciated. You've emphasized that. But I think, let me not speak for anyone else. I'll just say, in my experience, Tewksbury roads have, for the most part, been treated very well, both residential streets and the main thoroughfares. So I appreciate the effort, and we have to do our part on this side of the equation. And I want to thank you for being prepared. And hopefully, we won't need to see the plows out there too often.
That's right.
Excellent. Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have questions?
Could you comment?
Sure, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, big fan of the plus-up on the assessment work, adjusting the rates. I know we all heard about the challenges around it, being able to be profitable for the contractors. So I know that's appreciated. A big fan of the account of the maps, so you have that accountability now, and you're not chasing, trying to figure out who owns what area in the loyalty program. That existed prior to this year, correct? We just plus it up? No?
It existed somewhat in like sign-on bonus for early sign-on, but now we just wanted to focus it on length of service to try and get people to say, if I come this year and next year, then that's another five, another five, and it just stacks.
Right, perfect. And then the one question was, you said you've lost about twelve providers over the last two years?
Yes.
Do you have any concerns with being able to execute against what you mentioned with what you currently have?
So we'll have more accurate numbers by tomorrow at noon, which was the deadline. If you want to be loyalty bonus, you had to have all your paperwork in, your W9s, your insurance, and have all your vehicles inspected. Currently, we're tracking roughly eighteen contractors to try and get us to about forty-eight pieces, which would allow us to have at least one in every side route. Interestingly enough, we're still getting people walking in the door looking for packages as latest to this morning, so.
It's gonna snow next week.
You know, people see a snowflake on the forecast and suddenly there's a sense of urgency to get out here, so. We're definitely hoping to have a minimum of ones, and then some obviously spares because breakdowns and life events happen and people do not show up sometimes.
I will say that we're at forty-eight, we're tracking higher than what we had in last year.
Perfect. Well, great work, much appreciated. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, I know you wanted to.
Oh, just really quick, Mr. Montori hit it, you know, because it's pretty, I know, it's not a matter of when we get a picture. Because again, we strive for perfection, no one's perfect. And typically, it's sometimes with the new contractors too, because simply put, they're not aware of the roads, the streets, the cul-de-sacs, what have you. How typically a storm is at night too, we don't have usually calls during the day. But when can a resident expect, I guess we don't get callbacks, right? If they're gonna leave a message, they're not gonna get a callback. That's typically where a resident will get frustrated and escalate, whether it's through the board or through Mr. Montori. But what should we tell a resident? You know, when they put a call in, my street hasn't been plowed. Again, maybe just general terms, six hours, twelve hours?
So if we're in on operations, they'll get a live human being. That's one thing we do want to emphasize. If we are out plowing, you're gonna be able to talk to a person when you call. That could be two in the morning, there is someone there to man the phone. To your point, if we are not, we're done operations, we've gone home, whether to get some rest. We do strive to review within twenty-four hours the road conditions. Sidewalks, as Brian had pointed out, can be very tricky, but we do strive within a two-day, forty-eight to fifty-six hour time window on those. That's gonna be where we've seen the most complaints is, have you gotten to my sidewalk yet? And depending on the size of the storm, it could be the tail end of that forty-eight, fifty-six. And we try to do our best if we know, not always do the same sidewalk in the same order so as not to make someone feel like they're less important than someone else. So we will send a machine up sometimes up to the north section, which typically, when we start the season, will get done last because it's the farthest away and it takes so much time to get the machine there. We'll try and switch it up and send one to the north to work back through the north school and one to go in the south. And we try and treat everyone as fair as we can, but it is quite difficult.
Yeah, the sidewalks, for me, that's secondary. They can say, my road's plowed, my road's not plowed, but the adjacent road is plowed, and then we get the call. So again, it's just a matter of timeliness, that's all. Residents do get frustrated, and then the phones start going off, and you know, we try to tie it together. So pretty much if they're gonna put a call and expect, I mean, because even if you're plowing, you're gonna get a live person on that phone every operation when a resident calls.
Yes. If we're in, you'll get a live person.
Okay, very good. Even better. Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Wellman.
What's the phone number?
We don't give it out.
I write it down. I know that the people who do the stories are listening, but.
Andover.
Andover, Wilmington, LA.
I want to commend you for your work and preparation and the technical detail that you've brought with your pricing structure and your loyalty program and all that. I think it's really, really good work because I know how hard it is to get plow companies in and the vendors to help out. And it's critical. So if you have a few vendors that don't show up and you don't have enough anyway, it just makes it a lot harder on our staff to kind of backfill those roads too. And it's safer for our residents and our businesses to be able to operate on a road. So I'm greatly appreciative of all the work. I always enjoy the snow and ice operations. And my best wishes to all of your staff this winter for a safe winter during these operations.
Thank you.
And yeah, and to pull their Bose basketball hoops back because they'll take out a truck mirror just like that. It's, yeah, I've seen it, so I, yeah, thank you very much.
All right, gentlemen, you're gonna chalk, I think, a little bit of a.
I got a couple of questions before you. I got my list. Okay, quickly, we're doing twenty-three, we got twenty-three miles of sidewalks, and the plan is to clear thirteen, or we're gonna try to clear all of them?
No, no, we have about, I'd say forty-eight, I think we came up with about forty-eight, of which we're clearing twenty-three.
Okay, I thought I saw in the presentation that we had twenty-three miles of sidewalk.
Twenty-three that we maintain.
Okay.
Under the snow and ice program, but there is like forty-eight total.
Okay, so if there are locations that have become, I understand you have to get the main roadways and clear them, and that's the priority. I understand that, I agree a hundred percent. But after a storm's over, I mean, we put these sidewalks in there for reasons of they were under our design. You know, town engineer came up with these things because they're priorities in the community. So just I understand that you can't get all of them at the beginning of the storms. But as we go along, if we find that some of them are blocked, will somebody drive around to check some of those locations and try to open up the ones that people are walking in the street? I know we had somebody get hit by a car a couple of years ago that was walking around the snow pile and just got, and they got killed on the roadway. So, and the sidewalk was completely covered. And so I just want to see if there's locations where if somebody like paws, like you said, somebody has a big driveway, they put a mound of snow there, you know, is there a way to get that like knocked down by our things after the storms? I understand it's not the priority during the storms, but if there's something where there's a kid that's walking down the street and you got a blind spot, I just want to make sure there's some way for the kids to be able to. I mean, I know we're looking at Tewksbury schools, but we also get kids going to Shawshank Tech that'll be going to different locations and walking to. I know kids walk out to the main street to get the bus to go to the tech and coming out some of those side streets as well.
We can certainly look at those situations.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. It just, I understand it's not the priority, but after the storms, if we have the equipment, we've already done the ones that we planned on, and some of them have things, if we can drive by and say, you know what, this one need attention, maybe we'll send that truck there. Make it your priority, I understand that. But if you can make it a secondary route, does somebody go through there and see if there's an issue? I know we get a lot of calls that say people didn't plow my sidewalk. It's not on the list, we don't really even have the list of what the sidewalks are, but you know, to be able to do that. The other thing is, you mentioned parking during snow and ice emergencies. I know there's no overnight parking, but do we put something on the website to say that there's no parking during, like a possibility of snow events during the day? I know there's nighttime parking, but I don't know if we ever actually notify the residents that you're not supposed to be parking out there during the day during. I know there's no parking at night during those hours, but I may make something that we may want to notify people just so when you are doing your clearing of sidewalks, just make it more knowledgeable. I didn't even know that there was something that was out there. Also, you're talking about doing, removing snow from the schools. Do you have any haulers available?
At this time, we utilize our own trucks.
Okay, so we have a couple of our own.
We have a number that we don't put Sanders in just so that if we have a water break or if we have something like that.
I was just wondering if there was something we could use the haulers because we are gonna have, the north street will be empty at the beginning of it. And if you're trying to remove street, snow out of Pleasant Street, you can go down there and that location's not gonna be utilized. You could take the snow, put it in a hauler, get it out of there, and then bring it down to, you know, down there to be able to use it. Let me see, fuel adjustments, you mentioned fuel adjustments. I know DOT makes our adjustments as well. And there was conversation about shifting to like during, like looking at it half years. So if something like fuel spiked at one point or went down to a certain point, they made adjustments. So that may be something you may want to look at in the future. If like all of a sudden the economy gets great and fuel starts dropping, you know, make those adjustments or whatever it may be to make it work for you. If fuel goes through the roof and then all of a sudden vendors aren't showing up, that may be something you may want to look at. I know the biggest problem is not keeping the loyalty of what it is, it's getting drivers. Nobody has drivers. As I've talked to many cities and towns, everybody has the same problem. The contractors have the equipment, they can't get the drivers that have the CDLs, and it just, if you don't have a driver, it's no use having a truck that you can't put anyone behind it. So that may be something you may want to look at. Do you use rotation list on like for like the smaller events to like rotate the contractors or in? Or do the majority of them, just the same people get called?
No, the smaller ones, we typically scrape into ourselves.
Okay.
If we call in, we have had situations back in two thousand and fifteen where we needed loaders, so we brought the loaders in.
Yep.
You know what I mean, we didn't bring everybody in. But if we go into a snowplow operation, we call everybody and.
Get everybody, okay.
It's gonna take four hours to get through the route anyway.
I'm just, a lot of the things that, you know, we've done in the state is we've done four-and-outs.
Right.
So I may have thirteen combos and I need five of them, and I rotate them in and I tell the next group, well, you guys aren't gonna call the next one, I'm gonna call the other ones in. So just do a rotation list, make it fair for all the vendors to be able to do that.
It's something you certainly can look at, it's a good idea.
Do you have any, I know you have a loyalty thing, but do you have anything with response times for vendors to show up? Like if somebody doesn't show up for two hours or three hours, is there any penalty to that? Or do we call somebody and just say, hey, listen, your response time is inappropriate?
Right, so if they fail to respond with, obviously, they don't get paid travel time. If they fail to respond within one hour, they lose their minimum.
Okay.
Similar to the DOT, if once you hit that threshold, you don't get your minimum, it's hours worth.
So you do.
If you do have a four-and-out, you're only gonna get paid two and a half.
Gotcha, well, that's good, because it gives them incentive to come in to get their four hours.
Their plows are on and they show up ready to work, not, you know, I'll be there in two hours.
Okay, and the last thing I've got is, well, you mentioned telephone poles. Another reason to get those telephone poles out of the sidewalk so we can get down there. We keep bringing it up every time they come in front of us because that's one of the things. If you got a telephone pole, our things are gonna go right around it, and there's gonna be a big pile out there with the snow things. But a phone log of snow and ice complaints. If we have the same people calling constantly, like I'm gonna mention some person that calls me every road, and Richard knows it, you know it, Eleanor Road. We get that call, they go drive by that house, and for some reason, that road, they go around that area, and then that person calls us every storm. They didn't come down my road again, they think it's a private road, they think it's this. There's a lot of sections where there's, you know, turnaround and a little side edge to it. And the contractor will go around, and then maybe they'll come back and do it. Sometimes they forget. So is there something that, as you're making your list, that we have this person called five or six times? And you know what, we gotta do something about it to make sure that that driver is aware that that's the responsibility to be doing it?
Yeah, so with these new maps, it'll be a lot easier to put callouts within it. When you, like you said, you have those little thumbs or stubs that most people would say, oh, that's their driveway, like I talked about. It's so easy to miss sometimes in Tewksbury because there are quite a few of those. So now with these maps, it's a lot easier to then put the note that says, you know, forty Eleanor or whatever, Eleanor, just there's a stub, you need to grab it.
Yep.
Because the last thing you want to do is miss it, and some people, like you said, get frustrated because it's a contract. If it was us internally, it wouldn't get missed, but unfortunately, we're stuck on the mains.
And you're gonna have different drivers driving, like even though you have the same vendor hired, that vendor may have three drivers that are driving that truck. I understand that, and they may not all know it, so the maps are very helpful. But to the question, do you, if somebody, do you keep a list of people that call?
We don't have a list and sort of check off how many times they've called, no.
If you get somebody that's a frequent caller, you just may want to have somebody touch base with, is somebody calling a lot? Because they end up calling the selectman's office. I know we've received a number of calls on the thing, and then we end up just doing something. And we'll make a call, but then we get back to the next year and the same thing happens again. So if we can kind of take that into consideration when you're making those maps to talk to the drivers, I'd appreciate it. Other than that, I think everyone's doing a wonderful job, I appreciate it. I just wanted to hit these points before, you know, while we're here talking.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good.
We've hit a thought.
Onto stage two.
Yes.
Distribution system.
Yep, I got it here. Are you already hooked up?
Yeah. Good evening again. So I just want to give kind of an overview of the water distribution system, what it is, what we have in town, and where we're headed with it. So, construction of the system began in nineteen fifty-one. There was a plan put together to put water throughout the town. Between nineteen fifty-one and nineteen fifty-three, about sixty miles of water pipe was installed in town. To kind of put that in context, right now, you know, you see a lot of water projects we have going on in town. We do about two miles a year. So basically, say, every road in town was dug up and water was installed within a two-year period. So most of that pipe was AC. Down in South Tewksbury, they did put in wrought iron pipe for the smaller roads. In nineteen fifty-three, they transitioned over to cast iron. And then, again, they came out with a better product in the eighties, ductile iron, which was cement lined, and that was used from nineteen eighty, and that's what we currently use today. So the distribution network is about a hundred and sixty miles of water main. We've got three storage tanks with seven million gallons of capacity and about ten thousand water services to the residents and businesses in town. So the AC pipe, that was, you know, as many people know asbestos, it was the wonder material. It was gonna change the world. For the better.
So much for that's a deal.
Now we realize it changed it for the worse. It was installed between nineteen fifty-one and nineteen fifty-three, and the life expectancy is about fifty years ideally, but it depends on the installation conditions. You know, the bedding material that you install it in, is it installed in groundwater? Things like that will reduce the lifespan of that. The joints of the pipe are the sections that are the weak points, we call them the collars, where the pipes connect. And the one thing to note about AC pipe is it doesn't crack like cast iron or ductile iron and kind of spray out. It has catastrophic failures where it basically just blows apart underground.
Okay, great.
And then surfaces. Right now, we have about fifty-four point nine miles of AC remaining in the system. So wrought iron pipe was used mainly in South Tewksbury on the side streets, the old camp lots. And this is an uncoated material which tuberculates over time, which is kind of a rust formation. And this is an uncoated material which tuberculates over time, which is kind of a rust formation inside the pipe. You can see the picture up there of what it looks like later in its lifespan. It reduces capacity and creates water quality problems. And that two inch wasn't used for a very long period of time. Most of it's close to 70 years old. And there's still just about four miles left in the system. Cast iron, which was the next best thing after AC was phased out, that has a life expectancy of about 50 to 120 years, again, depending on the installation. And there's about close to 30 miles, 29 miles of cast iron pipe still in the system. And then this is what we use today, the cement lined ductile iron pipe. It's lined with cement to prevent tuberculosis and accumulation of oxidized rust in the pipe. It has a lifespan of about 60 to 130 years. There's close to 70 miles of cement lined ductile iron pipe in the system. But what we're seeing is there's significant supply chain issues with this type of pipe. We're seeing approximately 40 weeks to get the pipe. Which if we're going to put a project out to bid, we've got two projects we're working on now to put out to bid after the first of the year. We typically bid January, February timeframe. It would be very difficult to get that pipe delivered before the end of the construction season next year. So one thing we're looking at is PVC pipe, plastic pipe. It's, the type of pipe is C909. It's the type of pipe we use when we do a water repair or when we have a water break. It's lightweight, it's easy to work with. It basically uses the same couplings that we use for the ductile iron pipe. We're seeing that it's not affected by supply chain. I talked to the suppliers last week and they said typically you can get it in less than 30 days, which is a benefit. The cost of the plastic pipe is about half of ductile, the cost of ductile iron, which may seem like a lot, but when you put it into a water project, we've got equipment, material, labors, all that stuff put together, you may see a 10 to 15% cost reduction in a project. You know, on a, on a $2 million project, it's a significant amount. But, you know, I don't want to kind of mislead you saying that plastic costs half as much and you think that all the projects, we're going to be able to put twice as much in the ground. So this is a table showing the life expectancy of the different pipe materials. The first column, 100% is, what that means is you can expect to have that pipe material. 100% of that pipe that you put in the ground is going to last that long, you know, 50 to 100 years, depending on the pipe material. 50% of the pipe is then going to last, you know, 75 to 130 years. And then, you know, that last 10% that was installed in ideal conditions, you know, it's in great sand and it's dry, things like that, that's when you're going to get the longevity in the pipe that you put in the ground. The AC pipe and the cast iron can be highly variable depending on the quality and location of installation. Like I said, if it's in groundwater, you know, that cast iron is going to rust and fail over time. Same with asbestos cement. That, that water actually infiltrates the pipe because it is a cement-like material and it'll cause that to become weak. You know, we have instances in town when we uncover AC pipe and you can actually just put a shovel through it by hand. Because it is that weak. So we've undertaken a water mapping project and we're actually mapping every piece of pipe in town. We're looking to, to use this to plan our capital improvements. We're looking to figure out what the material and size are for every, every pipe on every road in town. The difficulty we're running into is, you know, as I said, we've got a system that's almost 70 years old. And, you know, we're trying to dig back through records that sometimes don't exist, you know. So with that mapping, this is the breakdown of the length, length of pipe and the percentage that accounts for in the system. As you can see, it's about 2%, 2.6% of the system that's unknown at this point. You know, about four miles of pipe that we're still researching to try to figure out what that, that pipe composition is in town. We do see that, like I said, we've got about four miles of wrought iron. It's 0.16 miles of steel pipe. That is at the North Street I-495 overpass and the Troll Road I-495 overpass. Steel is used in those applications because it's not buried in the ground. And it deals with the temperature fluctuations that you experience for a hanging pipe under an overpass better. And then plastic, we've got 0.13 miles of plastic pipe and that's on Concrete Road in town. So the other thing that we do is we track all the water breaks and water service leaks that we have in town. And we map those in the GIS system. So again, to, we can better account for our, and plan our capital projects. You can see that we've averaged about a dozen water service leaks each year. And we've averaged more than 35 water main breaks per year. You know, that's a significant amount of time that roughly translates into one issue a week within the water system that we're dealing with. So here's a list of a dozen projects that we've completed over the past seven years. The last project on the Whipple Road is still under construction. We finished a little more than the first phase this year and that will finish up next year. So we've done about 11 miles of water main work in those seven years for about $13 million. We've seen the price of water main work go from about $200 to $250 when these projects first started to now it's up around $300 a foot for those, those projects. You know, so that's a significant increase due to the, you know, COVID-related supply chain. So here's a, a list of a dozen projects that we have in the works over the next eight years. Again, it's about 12 miles worth of work and close to $19 million in cost for that. And that is based on about a $300 per linear foot cost for the projects. And that's what I have. Is there any questions, comments, concerns?
Anyone?
Mr. Krabbe, you lead us up.
Okay. So the cost of pipes delivery, obviously, plastic seems to be the obvious way to try to replace. If it's going to last longer and you can get it and it's cheaper, then it's, is there a reason that we would even consider using the other types?
So we live in New England, obviously.
Yep.
New England is very old school when it comes to, you know, implementing change. I've talked to many communities. I've talked to many suppliers. I've talked to many consultants on this plastic pipe issue. They don't really know of any communities in the Northeast that have gone the direction of plastic pipe. Everyone in, in the Northeast is holding on to ductile iron. That's what they're used to. That's what goes in the ground. That's what they know how to deal with. So I, I still have some research to do to figure out if plastic is the right way to go. I've talked with the director about possibly doing smaller, you know, projects, a road here, a road there. You know, but again, the risk we run is we've got the Whipple Road project underway. We've got two phases left to do next year, which they've already ordered the pipe. We've already got some in. It, and it's being stored at the DPW yard. But even if we get our other two projects out in January, awarded in February, we're not going to get pipe, we're not going to get ductile iron pipe before the end of the construction season next year, which means, you know, that, that 55 miles of AC pipe, you know, that in 2003 was at the end of its lifespan and needed to be replaced. And, you know, the cast iron, which a lot of that in 2003 was also at the end of its lifespan and needs to be replaced. You know, we've got nearly 85 miles of pipe that we need to replace. And waiting on ductile iron pipe may not be the right thing to do. You know, but just blindly jumping in and starting to put plastic in the ground isn't something I'm comfortable with yet. You know, so I still have some, some research to do.
But you mentioned that you're using it as replacement right now. So if something breaks, you're putting the plastic in. How long has that been going on for?
Since the sewer project. Sewer project. We found with the sewer project, when they went under, what heavy, when they had the water pipe above, it was too heavy and settled on top.
Right.
So they started, they started using the lighter pipe.
Have you had any problems with the lighter pipe that you've installed over that time?
No, because it's typically only installed three to five foot sections at a time. In the communities I've talked to and the consultants, the concern with the plastic pipe is when it fails, it fails longitudinally end to end. And that's typically due to the service connections. So you've got this plastic pipe, which by itself, you know, is great. It withhold, withholds 350 pounds of pressure, which we don't have in the system. We have, you know, 60 to 80% pounds. But when you drill a hole into it to tap it for a service connection, it weakens the pipe and that's where it could fail. You know, so that's, that's kind of the, the issue. We haven't seen any failure with the pieces that we've put in the ground, but we also haven't put service connections into them.
And so I, I was looking at the water breaks. I saw the numbers. I'm surprised that the low numbers actually, because it seems like we get a lot of breaks. You know, I saw for this year's 35. Now is that counting every break that we're having?
This year is only through October.
Okay.
We had about five breaks in November and then we've had at least one in December.
Yeah, because the police department and DPW has been doing a great job of putting out, we got a water main break, there's a detour, there's a water main break, there's a detour. But it seems like we see them a lot. You know, and the, I understand the system's very old, but it just seems like there's a lot more than 35. It just seems that maybe just.
Maybe you can go back then.
Is that a fiscal year? That's the fiscal year, right, Brian? Or calendar?
This is.
This is, this is calendar year.
Calendar.
Yeah.
And that's the water main break is about 34. Service breaks give you another 12, so you're.
Right.
Forty six.
Okay. Seems like we got a lot more notifications.
In the past, it has been too, when it was closer to, you know, just after the sewer project, we had a lot of breaks because of a lot of settling at that time.
And then when it comes down to that, leading it, you think you may have answered my question, but you know, if we install these type of pipes, what's the easiest to repair? When we're putting these in there. If there's going to be something that's, you know, we're going to put a new pipe in, yes, it's supposed to last that long or whatever it is. But what happens is every time you put in a main, we know it's going to find the weak spot. Because the pressure is going to hit and it's going to find a place. It could be a half mile away, it could be a mile away, depending on where that water pressure is being pumped. And so there's going to be a break, you know. I know we had an area on Brown Street a couple of years ago. You guys took care of that. It was all resolved. Now it's Hill Street seems to be, but there's other couple of locations that because we put a main someplace, it's finding that weak link and now, you know, attaching it. So no, we, we put out a lot of information on, there's a water main break. But is there, there's no, like, for us to do, to, I mean, what percentage are we at right now for replacing water lines in this community? If we're trying to figure out like, I mean, I know we have so many miles and you broke down the presentation of we have so many miles of this pipe, so many miles of this pipe. But what's the percentage that is, has been replaced and need, what percentage needs to be replaced?
So you can see right here, 34% of our system is AC. And on that other table, on the life expectancy, you know, there is some AC pipe that will last 100 years when it's installed in sand and it's dry and it, you know, it's ideal conditions. But I will say that, you know, at least 34% of the system was at the end of its lifespan in 2003. And then additionally, 17.8% of the cast iron, that was installed starting in 1953 through the beginning of the eighties. You know, so even the, the newest cast iron pipe that was installed is 40 years old. And that, you know, show the chart again, you know, that pipe should last 50 years. You can probably get, you know, 75 to 80 out of it. But, you know, at this point, we're pushing it with the, the cast iron as well.
So roughly around 50% needs to be replaced?
Right.
Okay. And so, you know, I understand the cost and what we're spending. I know we did a section of Whipple and not just that one section. Was the cost number on that, 7 million or whatever it was to do that section of roadway?
So the whole, the whole Whipple project from Chandler, Chandler Street all the way up to the Lowell Line is about $5 million.
$5 million, okay. So it's very expensive and we get 50% of the talent to still accomplish, to complete. So we probably got, we had a guesstimate, a couple hundred million to replace everything?
We can get you that number.
No, 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 I'm just trying to figure out. If we got that section, I'm trying to think of how many miles we have. We, we got at least well over 100 million.
So right, right now, we're roughly 1.6 to 1.5 million dollars a mile for the, the replacement. You know, and like I showed here, you know, we've got close to 85 miles that needs to be replaced. You know, so you're, you're talking 160 million dollars to do it.
And how much do we, and how much do we plan on doing each year to, I mean, I know you got the budget of whatever we may get and if we get funding from the state that came in, we got that funding to help. But how much is on the plan to do each year? Like how many replacements?
So this plan right here shows, you know, our, our breakdown of what we're looking to do. You know, like I said, over eight years, we're doing about 12 miles. So it's about a mile and a half on average a year.
All right. Thank you.
By the time we get through that.
We'll be doing over again.
The ductile iron that was installed in the early eighties will need to be replaced.
Yep.
And we'll be cycling through.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Mackey?
I will keep it short. So first of all, I want to thank you gentlemen and the staff over the past year and a half. I've pretty much earned my master's degree in water distribution. When I came in, this was one of the first things we talked about. I know you guys kicked that mapping project off over a year ago. I think there was like 20 some odd percent that was initially unknown, that was reduced down to two. So that is a vast improvement because you need to scope the problem before you can address it. I believe the number was close to 100 after that, in the next 10 years, right, miles that needs to be replaced? And then iron goes? So I want, there's a lot more to come for information. So for residents out there, Mr. Montori is nodding vigorously. This was a, a taste. We know there's a lot of issues. We all get the calls. You guys deal with it on a daily basis. There is a lot more to come with the scoping, exploring the plastic pipe. Is it the right answer for maybe mains, but not neighborhoods where you have a high number of connections, et cetera? So just wanted to say that for the residents out there, there is a lot more information to come. The scoping of the project, pricing, all of that fun information is still under development. So thank you for all the great work on this and thank you for the education on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, just a quick comment and a thank you and as extended thank you to Mr. Montori and for you guys to taking action. We came together as a board, I think, less than a year ago to say, what are our top priorities? And water, clean water was our number one priority. And now, whatever it is, six, seven months later, you're executing on a plan for the residents. And I did learn a thing or two because sometimes the water's yellow in North Tewksbury where it's clean in South Tewksbury. My point is different pipes, different conditions, different breaks. So I just want to commend you because like I said, without water, clean water, you know, we're all for naught. So positive steps outlining our plan. And we did allocate, I think it was $9 million of our ARPA funds, was it back in July or two years ago, in lieu of this big picture. So, you know, money well spent in the right area. We took a quick decision from the board. So thank you very much for the presentation and the work.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Ms. Wilman.
Thank you, sir. Really briefly, thank you for all of your work. And, and I don't know anything about pipe materials and materials engineering and so forth, but when I hear about plastic pipes, it makes me wonder about PFAS. So can you assure the public that there's no PFAS in our water pipes?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then just to review, to touch on what my colleague said with regard to ARPA funds, can you just remind us, Mr. Montori, how much money we're putting in from our ARPA funds?
There was approximately $9.3 million.
9.3, which is, is that all of our ARPA funds?
All of our money, every cent.
Yeah, 100%.
None left.
Yeah. And then the question I had for Mr. Montori earlier. Yeah, and then the question I had for Mr. Montori earlier today, which I'll share with you, was, will we be able to spend all of that before ARPA says we have to spend all of that? And I'm assured that that's the case.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
That pipe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one follow up. Yep, just one follow up. So Dan, you know, when we were getting ready to come to the board with the presentation on snow and ice, I had discussions with DPW that maybe it's a good opportunity just to give an overview of water. I know each of you, at different times, have had questions about water projects, future, current, future, issues when it comes to water breaks, brown water. So we wanted to take the opportunity, since we just finished up the season, with shutting down our water projects for the winter, going into the winter, that we know we will have more breaks than, as Mr. Krappman said, you know, it seems like there's been more, but the winter is historically more than there would be in the, in the good weather. So we just wanted to give an overview of where, where we stand in regard to our water infrastructure. But to Mr. Mackey's point, this truly is just an overview in the beginning. When we come back with our, with the capital plan, we'll have more detail, we'll talk more about it. We're gonna look to get more aggressive with our water projects as we start to review rates and the water enterprise overall. So this truly is the start of more discussions and ongoing discussions we're gonna have with water.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, and you, you did disclaim that for us as we set up this discussion, so I want to acknowledge that. This is just a look behind the curtain and there's a lot more work that has to be done and discussions to be had. And the only comment I'm gonna add is that in the vein of misery likes company, we are not alone. I would venture a guess that, you know, most, if not all, of the communities in the region are no better off than we are. If, if not, in some cases, they're probably worse off than we are in many different ways as it relates to infrastructure like this, so. Yeah, on, when you scratch the surface, it looks like a daunting thing, but if you have a plan and to Mr. Kelly's point, you can see one developing. And we've made some commitments already financially of sizable significance. There's a way to chip away at it. A colleague of mine repeatedly uses the phrase that the only way that you can eat an elephant is one bite at a time. And that's how this has to be handled, a little bit at a time. So we'll get there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna try to pick up some pace here, because it's a little before nine and we've been at this for a little while. I think we can hopefully make short shrift of a few of these items, so. Mr. Montori, do you want to speak to the topic of weights and measures, or is Mr. Sadwick gonna do that to see? Yeah, I'll come back to that, yeah.
I'll, I'll go over this issue. So currently, or the past at least 10 years, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments has, or NIMCOG, as many of you know, know it has, has been our CLO weights and measure. They've provided that service to us for a fee for the past, again, at least 10 years. And they have been reviewing our fee structure for weights and measures and compared it to other communities that they service and that they've worked within or they have knowledge of. And they're recommending that our fees be increased. Myself, the assistant town manager, have reviewed their recommendations with the executive director of NIMCOG. And we agree that it's time that our fees be increased. On the last page of the document that's in your packet provides recommended or proposed fees that NIMCOG has brought forward. And we would recommend that the board adopt the fees as recommended by NIMCOG for CLO, for weights and measures inspections starting in FY '24, which would be July 1, yes.
All right, do colleagues have questions about the schedule that was presented in the recommendation?
Uh, just one quick question, I know you have like Chumps for Drake, Littleton, Lowell, Wilmington, Burlington, Barricka, those ones also taken into consideration? Or just, did you just take some with similar?
It's just the ones that NIMCOG is familiar with the most.
Okay, I just, I just wondered why those ones are selected other than the other communities?
Okay, if there's no questions, are there any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation for the new weights and measure fees.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and the chair votes aye as well. I have one question, Mr. Montori, this is a test. What is the avois du bois weights?
I think Mr. Sadwick is familiar with that.
I didn't have time to, but it sounds like a good wine, if you ask me.
The name derives ultimately from French. It's pound that contains 7,000 grains or 256 drams of 27,344 grains each, or 16 ounces of 437 half grains each. And I think that it says we only have two of those, right?
Yeah, what do you measure with this?
Yes, I have no idea.
I'm not sure we know anymore now than.
Now I want to know who, who asked, who said that.
All right, we're gonna have to find that out.
I will, I will take on that task.
I'll find that out and get your.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion made, we have a second, do we take the vote?
You took the vote, yeah, we voted, we're moving on.
We're moving on, all right. So I was reminded that I ran over residents and inviting residents who wish to speak, but before I did, I saw the hall clear out, so. This is the last opportunity, I don't know if, if you have any resident comments, if not, we're gonna keep moving. All right, thank you.
I do have.
No, you gotta use, use a microphone.
You have your moment.
Thank you.
Bruce Check, 30 Lucille Drive. I listened to the whole DPW presentation with great interest, believe it or not. And I was wondering why they didn't allow or didn't suggest that residents could use their snow blower to clear some of those sidewalks if they felt like it. And I don't know if we've ever talked about it, if there's a liability reason for not suggesting it, but we suggest that they clean fire hydrants, we suggest they clean catch basins. But if you're next to a sidewalk and you want to plow or snow blow five houses in either direction, if there's no reason not to do it, I think we ought to say they can do it.
So moved.
Second.
We have no problem with that, it's just an oversight.
All right, excellent.
There's no requirement that residents clear the sidewalks at this time, but more than welcome.
We will add that.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay, Mr. Montori, there's a request from DLM Holdings LLC, otherwise known as 71 Newbury Street Properties, they're asking for a bond payment refund. Issued correspondence dated November 29. It's a $50,000 cash bond. And it looks like your finance department is recommending we release that?
Yes, the, the applicant for the billboard at the time had to put a bond, a $50,000 cash bond up. Once his application was approved, he does not intend to move forward with the billboard. So similar to how the planning board works, in order to release the bond or a bond, you need approval from the governing body, which is the Board of Selectmen, who approve the application.
And there's no, no potential for this organization or company to pursue that billboard further?
It doesn't, it doesn't appear at this time, they may come forward at a later date, but at least not at this time. And he's seeking the bond back and they may regroup and come back with something else, but not at this time.
Okay, all right, so you have, you're recommending we release the bond?
Yes.
Any questions, if not, any motions, please?
I'll make a motion to release the bond for, what's it?
DLM Holdings.
All right.
Yeah, for 71 Newbury Street Properties.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, we now have a number of items on our agenda, but we'll, we'll try to tackle these fairly quickly. These are all license renewals, as we customarily do at this time of year. The first category is liquor license renewals, you all have a printout, it's one page. There are 53 license holders identified. And I would ask if there's, we'll take a motion to approve them as a block. And I'd ask if there's a motion made that it be contingent on payment of all taxes and utility that, utility costs that are associated with the property. So we capture that in the minutes as we typically do. So can I, can I ask if there's a motion to approve the liquor license renewals?
So moved, but I have one question.
Okay.
Through you to Mr. Montori. We have one business on this list that does not have a license number, because that license hasn't been issued yet by the state. So in the case of this particular business, La Vida Dolce, do they have to pay twice for licenses when they've only, they've paid for it, but it hasn't been issued by the state yet? And so this is gonna come up on like a second year. And so we're gonna make this conditional upon the approval of the, you know what I'm getting at?
Yep, I'll have to double check on that, usually they would be, you would pay twice, but if it's not being used.
State hasn't issued it yet.
Yeah, so there may be difference, I just gotta, I just need to check on that.
Okay, yeah, great, well, if we can communicate that back to the business owner, I think they'd be appreciative of one way or another, and again, moved.
Okay, so we have a motion made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, so Ms. Wellman makes the motion, Mr. Krappman seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and just again for the record, your motion included payment of all the taxes and utilities?
Yes, sir.
All right, so next we have common victual licenses. And we have two and a third pages of common victual license holders. And again, we won't read them all, but if there's any concerns, please speak up, otherwise I'd ask for a motion with the same conditions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the common vic licenses, but I just have a comment on it. I had a conversation with the town manager, asking on some of these, you know, we're signing common vic for licenses for most of these businesses, but some of the businesses, I'm trying to figure out what this actually covers, what they can sell in their businesses. It's not well defined in what the license is, I talked to Mr. Sadwick, I talked to Mr. Montori, to cover what the businesses can actually sell and who's in charge of each and every type of service that they're selling, or what items they're selling. So they're doing some more research on it, I'm fine with signing it now. But just to let everyone know that they are doing a little bit more research into, you know, what this covers for the type of services they're selling for these convenience stores.
Okay. All right, so you've made the motion?
I made the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll make that unanimous. That brings us to amusement license approvals. We have a page with, it looks like 11 license holders to various amusement devices. And if there's no questions or comments, again, with the condition of payment of taxes and utility expenses, I'd ask for a motion to approve this list.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman making the motion, and Mr. Kelly the second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote aye as well. Next, we have 2023 entertainment licenses. And they obviously vary in terms of the specific restrictions and approvals on each of those, as we've reviewed many of them in the past, those conditions presumably would continue. It looks like maybe there's roughly 20 on this list. And I would ask for a motion consistent with the same requirements.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have a little discussion quickly on this. As I went through the licenses, there was some, a couple of questions that I had that I brought up to the town manager and the assistant town manager on some of the licenses that we're issuing. Some of them are straightforward, they're, you know, bands, disc jockeys, live music, whatever, all kinds of types of events. But there was a few in there where there was television. And honestly, one of the places I looked at for television, I've never seen a television in the business. There's another one in there that says radio, just radio. I know of many businesses in this town that have, that's not on this list, that have televisions and radios. And I think some of these things are kind of outdated on what we provide. And I try to ask Mr. Montori, he can give you a little bit more clarification from where this came from. But we send it to the same owners, asking them to renew their licenses. And there's a lot of businesses that have the same type of services, but yet we're charging some vendors, some businesses, and not charging others. So I, I just, I don't know if that's something the board wants to discuss, to talk about, but just having a television in your business, I don't know if that's really considered entertainment. Having a radio in your restaurant or business, is that considered entertainment, but yet we're charging them a fee?
Yep, I guess we should do some research, but I guess those business owners have every right to raise their hand and question that themselves too, right? So if they've been holding a license and paying for it year over year.
But to that point, we're sending it to those businesses, but all the other businesses that have them, we're not sending them to them.
Yep. That's the other way to look at it, right, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the entertainment license is a fairly new license compared to all the other license, licenses that the board provide, approves. And when I say new, it's probably, you know, 20 years. When they first came out, they had a list of items. And our application, which probably has not been updated for many years, lists radio and television and, you know, dancing and, you know, different items. And I checked with some other communities and just out of curiosity, after Slap and Crap and myself talked about it, and you know, we're consistent for the most part with other communities also, there's a standard application everyone uses from Hobbs and Warren, who provides these type of applications and licenses. And now that's not to say that we should continue that way, it's something the board should look at and can adjust, but in a few, don't want to, you know, charge for someone who has a TV or TVs or radio. That's something the board should consider, as Mr. Krappman said, and, you know, we can take it up at a, and then even the next meeting, I can give you a list of who just has a TV, you know.
I just wanted, it's my point, I just want to make it fair across the board.
Yeah.
That if, you know, if we're sending it, because historically, we've always sent this application to that business because they paid it, but yet we have other businesses that opened in town and we never sent them an application to say, I just, does anybody go and check all the businesses to see if they have these?
You know, we do, we inspect the businesses, but I can't say they're checking for every one of these, these items, so. You know, what might be a good idea is you can approve the licenses tonight. We'll hold the ones that are just, you know, a TV or a radio and come back on the 20th when you meet, and I can let you know who they are and we, we can make a recommendation what to do with them. Most of them are, you know, have a TV, have a radio, have dancing, have, you know, six or seven other items that really are, to the point that Mr. Krapp made, entertainment, they just check that off. But we can look at the one offs and I can come back to the board at the next meeting and can make a recommendation, we'll hold that license, we'll, we have the check, we can adjust with the owners as we need to.
That's fine.
For the most part, you can approve, you know, these tonight and I'll, I'll pull the other ones.
Okay, Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, is the purpose of licensing the entertainment because it's a draw for customers versus, so it's, you have a TV in your salon because it's providing relaxing, whatever, versus I'm showing the game?
Right, so entertainment licenses are only for establishments that have, you know, liquor licenses and common victual licenses. It's not for a salon, it's not for a, you know, an oil change location where you're waiting in a room or car dealership, it's for somewhere that you're going to buy. It's for somewhere that you're going to buy food or have a drink. And the thought process, I'm sure, at the time was, you know, during the Super Bowl, you may have a large crowd. They had to watch the game. It'd be loud. It'd be truly entertainment. You may have a pay-per-view event at your location. Well, that's something neighbors maybe should know about and if there's going to be loud noise and a large crowd. Now, how often that happens, you know, maybe not that often, but again, to some of the locations that do have that one TV, they're not really a location that would do that.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Montori.
Mr. Mackey, no, you okay?
Ms. Wellman hit it.
All right, so in the only comment I'd make, Mr. Montori, I'd ask you or staff to look at this on the common vic licenses. Tuxbury Country Club was stricken from that list, but on the entertainment list, they're still remaining. So I don't know if that's intentional or an oversight, but...
Probably no, I will take care of that.
You could check on that. All right, so with the promise of some further research, is there a motion to approve these licenses as listed with the payment of taxes and utilities contingent on that?
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Then we have two organizations, the Knights of Columbus and the Tuxbury Wilmington Elks that hold pool table licenses. So I would ask for a motion to approve the renewal of those pool table licenses.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That would be unanimous. And then lastly, we're talking about auto sales. We have class one licenses. There are three of those, class two licenses. There's approximately 10 of those. And we have one class three license. And I'd ask if there's a motion with the same conditions attached to approve these licenses.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That would be unanimous. Okay, so that brings us to Tuxbury Beautification Committee. There's a request apparently to reduce the size of the committee. Is that something you want to speak to?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up here. Pull up a chair and introduce yourself if you don't mind.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jennifer Bolch Kenny. I am Sixth School Street and I am the Chair of the Beautification Committee.
All right, welcome.
Hi, guys. Thanks for...
Knowing that, we would have had you come up earlier.
No, it's okay.
You make everyone stay till 9:50.
It was very informative about the DPW. And on a side note, the contractors doing the water and sewer line, I just... I live on School Street, so we just lived through it the summer. They're amazing. They're really respectful of everybody's time, of the residents and everything. So they were really wonderful.
Awesome.
So.
All right, so explain what you're trying to do here. You want to make this committee a little bit smaller? You having quorum issues?
Yeah, we're currently having a quorum issue. Originally, the committee was for 12. And the thought process was that anybody who applied to be on the Beautification Committee could be on it. And at one point, we were a very robust committee, but at this time, we're a very small committee. And we have about five active members. And at the size of 12, we can't have a quorum and therefore we can't do the wonderful work that we do. So we're here to see if you guys can approve a reduction in the committee so that way we can, you know, go along our business and get our town clean up and all that stuff that we do.
And do you know if people that are on the committee who haven't been attending meetings, do they want to remain on the committee? Or do they want to be off the committee?
So the current members that are five are the current active members and the current members on record. So anybody who hasn't shown up and have all been... Have left and have notified the town of their...
Got it, okay. Mr. Montori, you've reviewed this, you have...
I have, and it's... I agree with it. Some of our committees grew too much and we need to.
Are there any questions from the board?
Nope.
Not? Can I ask for a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reduce the size of the Tuxbury Beautification Committee from 12 to six members.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Wellman makes the motion. Mr. Kelly seconds. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote aye as well, so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
A lot of heavy lifting and waiting tonight, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Happy holidays, everybody.
Right, you too. Okay, that brings us to Town Managers' Annual Evaluation. I know as we get to December, it's always... It comes up on the calendar. But when we entered into an employment agreement with the town manager many years ago, we were very deliberate and made the commitment that we would do an annual review. I think after he started, the state law changed and it required that this performance evaluation be completed in open session. Before Mr. Montori's tenure, that was not done here in Tuxbury, either by the board's election or because the state law didn't require it at the time. But certainly, each and every year of his employment, we have endeavored to make that a reality at this time of year. And that leads to discussions about any changes in the contract that we have with him, the term of the contract that we have with him, and ultimately, any compensation adjustments as we get into next year as part of the budget process. So this is the first step in kind of a continuing and ongoing discussion. And it starts with the board's evaluation of Mr. Montori's performance. So I know all of you have done this at least once before, if not numerous times. So you all are familiar with the process. So I would just ask if you can offer your comments and then we'll take it from there. So Mr. Kelly, do you want to lead us off tonight?
Sure, so just right out of the gate, I believe in letter grades. I like letter grades. So Mr. Montori, I'll give you a letter grade of an A, sort of A plus, A minus, a solid A. Your level of responsiveness is second to none. You and I have worked many, 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 many issues for residents where we don't have to bring it to this board, have a committee, you know, pick up the phone for a resident and we get a lot of things done. Sometimes the outcome is the outcome, you know, for obvious reasons. The outcome isn't what a resident may desire, but your level of responsiveness is second to none. Your direction and supervision, I don't like to use... Don't... I don't like to use the word manager or leader. Your direction and supervision, I often equate you to Bill Belichick, but he hasn't won a Super Bowl in a few years. So again, you know, there's always room for... Always room for improvement. But it starts at the tippity top and you're on a very tight ship. Your department heads across the board from end to end. I think Tuxbury is very fortunate and very lucky. I always say the sun always shines in Tuxbury. And it starts at the tippity top. Now, when it comes to the budget, this is where I press you, you know, you and I don't always agree. That's fine. We're not supposed to. But you're doing your job. So when you do increase the rate, the levy rate to 2.5%, we have to because we're 85% residential. We're not a Burlington. We're not a Lowell, as an example, where you don't have to... We're obligated to almost max out the levy rate. But you're doing your job. It's up to the voters to come an annual town meeting and special town meeting and say a yea or an nay based on that line item. I think it's so critical for our residents to understand that where, you know, you're doing your job. We need... I'll give you an example. We do need a new DPW station. I called it a dump many, many times. I wasn't in favor of the project in lieu of the economic conditions, but we took it to a vote and it passed. And that's just one example where we don't agree, but you're doing your job. You're doing what you're supposed to. And at the end of the day, you know, our town form of government is a yea or a nay. And I just want residents to understand that. I like to be a little more conservative, but again, you're doing your job. It's always up to the voters. You know, I could go on and on and on, but I think, you know, if I wasn't on this board and I was a resident, we are lucky to have you as a town manager. And nobody's perfect. We talked about tonight about snowing, water, you name it. We talked about nothing is perfect in life. But you're as solid as they come. I respect you completely. I'll challenge you. I'm not always going to agree with you, but I think a lot of you and I respect you a ton. So I'll try to be that short and sweet, so thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Krappman, let me turn to the left side.
Yeah, I echo my colleague's evaluation. Richard, you've done nothing but fabulous things for this town. I said this almost every time I've been in here doing your evaluation. I wouldn't trade you with any other town manager in any city or town that we have in the community. I think there's always room for improvement and we always... I talk to you more times than you want to because I'm constantly calling and asking and getting things from residents, and that's our job. Our job is, we're elected by the residents. We're supposed to listen to them and listen to their feedback and give that information to you. This is what we're hearing. This is what we're doing. We're on the community. We're voicing that. On that thing, we used to have something that we did, you know, New Residents Day. And I was thinking about this when we're doing town meeting. Unfortunately, we're not getting the numbers that I think any of us would like for town meeting. And I don't know if it's something that we could talk about, but prior to doing meetings, town meetings, I would like to see something maybe like a Residents Day where we're talking about, you know, we had new residents, our existing residents to talk about, here's some of the issues that we have coming forward. And it's... And we're guilty of it, all of us, that we'll have conversations with you. You tell us what's going on. I know what's going on. The board members know what's going on. The department has to know what's going on, but the residents aren't getting that town information of what we do. I think we can do better at informing residents of yes, we're listening to them. Yes, we hear what you're saying. There's a lot of complaints, a lot of issues that are happening. And if there's a way that we can, you know, get more information out there that if they have something that they're concerned about or what it is, like we have the DPW came in, they gave a presentation. I don't know how many people watched this, but I guarantee you, we're going to get calls in the next couple of weeks saying what's going on with snow and ice. Because we're just... I'm just trying to find better ways to educate or notify the residents of what the town's doing. The town's doing a fabulous job. How we get that message out to the residents to let them know, I think that's one aspect that we can improve on. So if we can work on that, I think you're doing a wonderful job and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
What's that, Mr. Krappman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to read my comments into the record. So reading through my... It does not as long as it looks.
Maybe we'll read the judge of that.
Yeah. It's 8.4. It's like four pages now. Reading through my review of Mr. Montori last year, I noticed that we were still in the thick of dealing with the effects of the pandemic. And so we've come such a long way in the last year, still dealing with some of the COVID impacts on our staff, our budget, supply chains, inflation, and more. I commend Mr. Montori and his entire leadership team and all of our staff for their continued dedication, resilience, and professionalism. His philosophy has always been mindful of putting residents and employees' health and well-being first and foremost, while being a responsible steward of our human and financial resources. Our staff continue to develop, doing more than ever to be responsive to resident and business needs. On the matter of board relations, I find Mr. Montori's performance exceptional. His proactive approach to keep board members informed on matters on a weekly basis is consistent. He reaches out to the board on urgent matters as they arise. He maintains accessibility for when we have questions or matters that need to be addressed. Every conversation ends with, let me know if you need anything. He is prepared and brings forward the tools we need to make informed decisions. When it comes to budget planning and financial management, I find Mr. Montori's performance exceeds expectations. Conservative budgeting is the cornerstone of his planning, fortunately, which helps the town buffer the unexpected. This year, we now have more than $14 million in our stabilization account and our bond rating remains high. The town has never passed an operational override, but with smart planning and utilizing instruments such as the Community Preservation Act, Mr. Montori continues to implement the priorities of this board and the community in our capital investments, operational stability, and careful management of growth in our departments. Special achievements this year include the opening of the new center fire station on time and under budget, the passage of new zoning bylaws, passing funding for the expanded staffing in our police, fire, and public works departments, the completion of a number of critical infrastructure projects for waters we heard tonight, roads and sidewalks, the passage of funding for the new Department of Public Works and School Facilities building, and the passage of retail cannabis regulations. His participation on the Elementary School Building Committee has been essential to the success of that project, holding vendors accountable and working to ensure the safe completion of the school set to open next month, once again, on time and under budget. Plans are underway to utilize ARPA funds to stabilize our water rates. More roadway projects are in the planning and we continue to do more sidewalk projects as well. When it comes to economic development, this year's been an exciting year for the town with new projects coming to fruition and welcoming new businesses to the community, including Treehouse Brewing, Starbucks, La Vida Dolce, Roma Joe's, and many more. As we move toward the development of retail cannabis shops, his proactive attendance to process has helped guide the board through our decision-making. These changes will impact the community for years, will generate new revenue streams, and will keep our strong financial position. Mr. Montori understands the needs before us in the future as well and has embraced the importance of developing affordable housing for residents of all ages and abilities. Supported senior tax relief program we passed at town meeting, supported the work of the DEI committee as we began, and more. His leadership and dedication to the town has been steadfast, even though... Even through frustration such as the ordeal our residents on the Andover end of South Street have had to endure with the contractors yards bringing up without proper permitting. Your willingness, Mr. Montori, to meet with residents impacted by projects in town whenever they want is essential and impressive. I've been happy to see improvements in communication and community engagement through the electric signboard, the use of code red alerts, the new website, and the continued utilization of gilfoil. I'm really hoping to see Richard go hiking one day on a trail, maybe. And I bet we can get him to help out once again on a Tuxbury Habitat build project. Unlike businesses, government doesn't operate on a quarterly basis, is not focused on the short-term return. Instead, government requires something of an infinite mindset, and this work is a continuum. Many projects happen at the same time. Crises happen inconveniently, and when one thing ends, 10 more things need to be done. Mr. Montori and his staff do an excellent job of managing that continuum. Pivoting is needed to respond to constituent needs. Tuxbury residents, businesses, employees, and guests continue to benefit from your leadership, and we thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was a short version, right? Very good.
You bet.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I had to cross out a number of my bullet points here, but my style is the antithesis of Ms. Wellman. I'm going to be short and sweet. I want to call out some of the high points and I am going to appropriate Mr. Kelly's grading system. The letter grade is ideal and I am also going to give you an A. So some of the highlights are, for me, are the weekly reports. They always have pertinent information. Everyone on this board works with you on different items that everyone may not be involved in, and that's always a good wrap-up to kind of get everyone on the same page. Prompt and attentive. My one caveat or area of improvement is overly attentive and responsive sometimes. I will have to text Mr. Montori at an odd hour and say, don't respond to this till X. And that never works. I always get a phone call, how can I help?
Doesn't take direction well.
Yeah, only on that one specific topic. So again, over-attentive. You do a great job taking care of your staff, making sure they have their time. And I want to make sure that you're being cognizant of your own time as well.
Thank you.
Some of the call-outs for Ms. Wellman hammered on a number of them, so I'll call out the website again. Things that I worked closely with you on, your management of that, kind of wrangling those vendors. I know there were a number of challenges, PM changeovers, et cetera. The water mapping project we saw tonight, I know has been an ongoing effort. DPW and other buildings, they masterfully handled the process of... All kudos. Very large projects. It's not a single vein. It is kind of a shotgun approach to all of these various projects and programs that are managed and guided by yourself. One of the big call-outs for me is one of my feedbacks last year was looking at implementation of a personnel review for your direct reports. We review you. We do goals and objective settings, and that is something I personally wanted to see implemented. And I know you have implemented that, so kudos on that point. And I'm going to reiterate the point of caring for your staff, the cookouts, the making sure on holidays. You do a very good job of balancing the needs of the community and being responsive to the community, but also realizing that your staff, your employees are people too. They need to spend time with their families on holidays, if applicable, et cetera. So again, I'll reiterate that great of an A and thank you for your wonderful service this year.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Mackey. I'm going to come... I'm going to come at this a little differently because most of the comments that have been made already, I absolutely agree with. So I'm not going to repeat them, but as I thought about having gone through this process now, I don't know how many times, it boils down to, my opinion is that you're highly professional, you're highly accountable, and you're highly ethical. And I don't think there's much more to say beyond that. But I will add one last comment, and that is that we collectively, me individually, have sat at this table and made many decisions over the years, countless decisions, some very difficult decisions. Mr. Schick earlier alluded to the fact that, you know, that there's tough choices to be made at this table. All of us here who sit on this side can attest that that often is the case. Some nights, a little easier than others. But the single best decision that I ever made sitting as a selectman was pursuing a discussion with you and making sure that we hired you. And that is the number one decision that I think when my tenure here is over will remain as the best decision that I ever made as a select board member. So I can't add any more to that than to say thank you for your work and ask you and urge you and encourage you to continue to do what you do because we need you and our town is better because of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we turn the tables, and it's your turn for the meeting. So do you have anything you want to talk to us about?
Before, I have one thing for the board to approve, but I just want to say again, thank you to everyone for the, for your kind words and for your support in everything we do here. I can't, I'm not successful without your support, so. This truly is a team effort. I say that every year, but I mean it every year. It's my relationship with this board, your dedication to this town, your ability to make decisions, most of them very difficult decisions. Working with myself, the Department Heads, the Department Heads in general are outstanding Department Heads. I was thinking of this, I was talking to Selectman Wellman today about it. I, I really think this is the best collection of Department Heads this town has seen and that I have had. They're all outstanding. Some of them are new in their positions. Some of them came into their positions with very little experience, but have taken to the job and have done an outstanding job. I have a mix of senior staff. I have new staff. All of them work well together. They're very professional. They're very attentive. They're very dedicated to this community, and they're responsive to the residents. So I couldn't be prouder of the people that work in this community from Department Heads right down to the staff in each of the offices. You know, it's been a difficult few years because of COVID. And I'm most proud of the work that they did during COVID, coming out of COVID and how we're responding, you know, a year or two from COVID. But again, it's a team effort. And I couldn't do it without them, and especially without this board. And I appreciate how this board works. I see what other towns go through and some of their difficulties. We don't have that here, and that's because of the leadership of the five of you. And so I want to thank you for that. So again, thank you for your kind words. We have a lot to do. Nothing is perfect. We have things to improve upon. And I can tell you that we will work out of doing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I have one item. I have a town council invoice in the amount of $3,817.50 for November 1st through November 15th, and I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion made on town council's invoice from November 1st to November 15th. The amount is $3,867.50. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. All right, we have some minutes to cover. I think we had varied clerks for these, so I'll, I'll run through these. And we'll have to take them independently. November 10, 2020, everyone's had a chance to review those. If you have, did someone offer a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Wellman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair's going to abstain because I was not on the board at that time. So that's four votes in favor, one abstention. February 4, 2021 is an executive session. Everyone's had a chance to review that. If so, can I ask for a motion?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Kratman makes the motion to approve. Ms. Wellman seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm going to abstain again because I was not on the board at that time. That'll be four in favor, one abstention. We have April 5, 2022. Everyone hopefully has reviewed those. And if so, may I ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
Because these are sequential, is it possible to make a motion to approve the next four minutes?
Certainly. If you want to try that, we can do that.
April 5th, May 18th, July 19th, and September 13th, 2022?
It's fine.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Any, okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman. We have a second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote in the affirmative on those. So that would be unanimous vote. All right, that brings us to board member reports. Ms. Wellman, why don't you lead us off tonight?
The only thing I'm going to say tonight in addition to everything I already said is that the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee is looking for applicants so that we can maybe appoint them at our next meeting. So I would like to get the word out to the community. And I've asked Mr. Montori if we can call some of the previous applicants who weren't previously appointed to see if they would be interested in reapplying. And that is all I have.
Okay. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only real update is we are having a kickoff call with Dragos to start spending some of that funding they were kind, kind enough to donate to us for our cybersecurity project.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Kratman.
Just want to thank everyone once again for all the board members that work so hard on the Tray Hand and North Street School. There's a meeting once a week, sometimes twice a week on some of these meetings, and it's been going on for years. They did diligent work, and I'm happy that the reporters finally came to our board,